...our meeting tonight, my name is Thomas Lambert, Board of Ed Vice Chairman. And with the absence of Mrs. Crotty, I will be the acting chairman of this meeting tonight. I would like to convene this regular meeting of the Board of Education Monday, March 27, 2017, at 7:30. Please stand for salute to the flag. [inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Mr. Makowski?
Here.
Ms. Wilk?
Here.
Ms. Rinaldi? Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Crotty? Mr. Vincenzi?
Here.
Ms. Rosa?
Here.
Mr. Gambardella?
Here.
Ms. Albino?
Here.
Mr. Deacon?
Here. Thank you. On to item D. In your packet, all board members should have received the March 13, 2017 Board of Ed meeting minutes. Did everyone receive their minutes? Yes. Yeah, thank you. I need a motion to accept the minutes of the Board of Education regular meeting of March 13, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board approve of the minutes from the March 13, 2017, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes or additions to the minutes? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
One abstention. Motion passes. Thank you. We are now in the awards recognition phase of the meeting. I will now turn it over to Dr. Carnamora.
Thank you. So, we'll start this evening first with what would be our, called usual recognition, which is from Judson School, and so there are so many of you here tonight because we would usually recognize students from Judson this evening, but we are also recognizing many of our music students for their achievements. We'll start with Judson. And our students tonight are here for their participation in our student council. And I know a few things about you from some of what I've seen myself and also from what I've heard from Mrs. Scully and Mrs. Chipko about the current members of the student council. This current board is very responsible and self-motivated. Remind everyone, we're talking about grades three, four, five. We're recognizing fourth and fifth graders here tonight. Every board member is very active and completes the role without prompting from the advisors. Meetings are run with more independence than in previous years. Both secretaries are very proactive. The recording secretary has the minutes written the day after each meeting, and they are accurate and well organized. The recording secretary always completes meeting reminder notices without reminding. Various activities meet regularly with Mrs. Markhor and Mrs. Chipko each month, various active committees, excuse me. And so, just a sampling of some of what they've done. I have a very long list, but some of the things that this student council at Judson has conducted. They raised $657 for UNICEF in October. For breast cancer awareness, they raised $400 for Quilt Stack Care. They do the Turkey of the Year every year, very fun time at Judson, and this year, they raised $900 for that, for the food bank in November. They've had a hat sock and a mitten drive. They have given boxes and boxes of food to the local food drive. They have raised $400 for the Heart Association in February, also very impressive since we had a limited number of school days in February. We have some shamrocks and the calf and the rainbows, which are ongoing for the March of Dimes in the month of March. And we have some upcoming scheduled events that they've already planned and are running. In April, we have a fundraiser for the John Trumbull Primary School family, for one of our ill students there. And the students will look at teachers' pictures, wasn't this a fantastic idea, from when they were eight to 11 years old, and try to guess who they are. I can't wait to see what that looks like at Judson. And in May, they are doing planting at the senior center. And the money from the water bottles that they continually collect at Judson goes toward this cause. So, that's just a sampling of what this little student council does at Judson School. So, tonight, we are going to recognize several students for their participation. We'll start with grade four. We, let me pause and make sure everybody knows what to do. Some of you have been here and some of you haven't. So, I will call your name. You will come up, and Mr. Lambert will give you your certificate. And then, students, I ask you to step to the side for a minute, just step right over there. And when we're done with all of the Judson students, we'll pause for your parents, grandparents, whomever, to take a picture. And then you can sit back down, and then we'll move on, okay? So, for grade four, the vice president, Ava Kyle. [applause] Congratulations, Ava. And Isabella Lombardo, the recording secretary. [applause] In grade, in grade five, we have Jason Hannes, who is the president. [applause] The corresponding secretary in fifth grade, Charlotte Carlson. [applause] Congratulations, Charlotte. That's okay. The treasurer, Abigail Metcalf. [applause] Congratulations, Abby. Okay, if I could ask, I know Mrs. Chipko is here, and I know Mrs. Scully is here, if you'd like to come up also. We'll take pictures.
Okay, so let's move down to the middle. Good. Everybody stood together the right way. All right. We eye a little bit back. All right, so, let's look a little bit to the left first, then the middle, and then the right. Sorry. Left.
No, no way. Couple of guys. You might not, I'm explaining it slowly.
From the middle. [laughter] Thank you again. Congratulations.
So, as I mentioned, the month of March is March, Music in Our Schools Month nationwide. And so, we try to recognize both our music program and our music students during the month of March here at the board. And the students we'll recognize here tonight are students that were accepted into the music festivals for 2017, which means they were selected by private audition, and they represent some of the most motivated and talented students in the area. This is very difficult to do. It is very time-consuming, and it takes a lot of dedication, work, and maybe a tiny bit of talent. Much more than I have in music. So, we will start with the high school. And if you, I'll call, again, I don't know that you're all here. Too many people filled in by this point, but I'll call everyone regardless. And I think it's important to mention what they were able to get into as far as the music festival is considered and for what. So, give me a little bit of room to be able to say each student's name and what they did, just before we applaud. So, we'll start with grade 12 at Watertown High School, Joshua Rotis, who is in the Connecticut North Regional High School Music Festival, the All-State Music Festival, the NAFME Eastern Division Honors Chorus, and the National Choir for being a tenor. [applause] Come on up, Josh. I'm sorry, I didn't reiterate the rules, but come on up. Congratulations. She was just up to the side from here. You can sit right in the front if you want and wait. And grade 11, Julia Scolacci, who has been entered into the Connecticut Northern Regional High School Music Festival, the All-State Music Festival, the NAFME Eastern Division Honors Chorus, all four, who are singing as an alto. [applause] Second time in one week I've been somewhere that you've received an award, Mary. Another 12th grader, Mary Ryan, who has been entered into the Connecticut Northern Regional High School Music Festival and the All-State Music Festival as a soprano. [applause] Congratulations. May Jang, an 11th grader, who is in the Connecticut Northern Regional High School Music Festival and the All-State Music Festival, again, as a soprano. [applause] Congratulations, Haley. And last from the high school tonight, Vanessa Morse, grade 11, who has been entered into the Connecticut Northern Regional High School Music Festival for singing again as an alto. [applause] So, we'll pause a minute here so we can separate them.
Mr. Jones is a likely excuse of defending a doctoral dissertation. Tonight, so, we have our two assistant principals, Mrs. Cody and Mr. Colgriff. All right, so, same rules apply. We'll look to the left a little, and then I'll say. [laughter] The harder one this time, the right. [laughter] Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Okay, and again, on to Swift Middle School again. If you, I will say, this one is a bit easier because at the middle school, there are less opportunities for which festivals that they get into. And so, everyone who's being recognized here tonight has, for the middle school, has been entered into the Connecticut Northern Regional Middle School Music Festival. What they have entered for obviously differs, whether it's singing or playing an instrument, so I will say that. But note that they are all in, have participated in the Connecticut North, Northern Regional Middle School Music Festival. And we'll start with an eighth grader, Melanie Boyven, Boyven, who is a singer and has entered in as an alto. [applause] Jordan Elliott, an eighth grader, a baritone. [applause] Ruth Fomo, a seventh grader, who sings as an alto. [applause] Jesse Kay, an eighth grader, who plays the clarinet. [applause] Congratulations, Jesse. Charlotte Manalo, a sixth grader for percussion. [applause] And finally, an eighth grader, Noah Ryan, who plays the bass clarinet. [applause] Congratulations, Noah. Okay.
Pause. Hey, guys, everybody take half steps this way, so they get better. So, any bit more. There you go. Okay, this word is here, there we go. I need to introduce this board as I was saying. All right. Last time, to the left. The middle. And the right again. There you go. Thank you, guys. Congratulations, guys. Thank you for bringing my.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry.
All right. That's it.
Listen, I'll.
You're welcome to stay. The meeting will continue. We won't be offended. We're used to it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carnamora. Now, we'll move on to item F, report from Student Council Representative, Ali Deacon.
Thank you. At John Trumbull, the John Trumbull Primary School Parent Teacher Organization held an auction on Saturday, March 18, bringing 180 families together and raising $20,000 for the school and $5,000 for the family of a second grade student who was recently diagnosed with a rare, rare disease. My apologies. The Swift Water Oak Adolescent Heroes visited, visited John Trumbull, teaching a lesson to every, every K through two classroom, focusing on the importance of kindness and being unique. At Judson, 32 student inventors participated in the invention convention on March 14, with seven of them moving on to a regional competition. Students will be taking interim block assessments in math class, which are one way that teachers can check student progress throughout the year. At Polk, the student council raised $750 for the March of Dimes by selling shamrocks last week. On Friday, March 24, the Polk School Safety Committee met with Jill Brown, Remo Sannacola, and other local law enforcement officials to complete the school vulnerability assessment. At Swift Middle School, the student council held a three-on-three after-school basketball tournament, raising $900 for the Jimmy V Foundation. Swift students have been preparing for the Smart to Balance testing using the Chromebooks, with official testing starting during the first week of April, with the CMTs for Grade Eight and Language Arts and Mathematics testing after spring break. As well, not least, at Watertown High School, seniors are working hard to complete their capstone projects, having led various activities to raise awareness and funds to support needs in both our local community and abroad, such as volleyball tournaments, open mic nights, talent shows, and more. And the district art show on Thursday, March 16, which was held here, was a great success, showcasing the artistic talents of our students, ranging from kindergarten to graduating seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Deacon. Moving on to item G, superintendent's recommendations and report. Dr. Carnamora.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the staff, the administration at Judson School for assisting me in the development of a visit for our board members to see the work that we are doing in grades three through five in action. As the board knows, several of us were able to visit Judson School with Dr. Parlato and with Miss Scully last Monday. We saw a great example of a fourth grade math being taught according to the new standards. And we also spent time watching a class in the library and in the technology lab. Students were using Chromebooks to do research in the library and evaluate authors and sources, excuse me, evaluate sources of information related to authors in the fourth grade class that we saw in the library. And in, similarly, in the technology lab with Mrs. Rinaldi, we saw students creating Google Slides presentations and critiquing each other's slide presentations. It was an interesting way to watch the intermeshing of a higher-level skill that we teach across the district, looks different by grade level, but that is the skill of evaluation in the cognitive rigor matrix. That is a higher-level skill to teach students, and we certainly had a good chance of seeing that, both in the, in the instruction of math and the utilization of technology for resource, research. And clearly, teaching students this young how to evaluate sources online, sources of information, websites, and so forth, is a key skill in the 21st century. So, I think we saw some great examples of what we are doing right now in Watertown Public Schools, some of the culmination of the work that we have done for the last few years. And again, I'd like to thank you. And I'll mention also for the record that we went to Judson because of scheduling. We wanted to see something in three, four, or five. And as you know, the technology teacher and the library media specialist are split. It's one person for each that is split between both schools, and they are at Polk in the morning, they're at Judson in the afternoon, and it worked to do the visit in the afternoon. So, we saw those classes at Judson, but same teacher, same classes that we would have seen with different students had we gone to Polk. And this is a continuation of some of the visits that we started in the district so that we could see some of the work in action. And we visited full-day kindergarten last year, I'm sorry, excuse me, we visited half-day kindergarten last year, and extended-day kindergarten last year in preparation for bringing in full-day kindergarten, and we also visited the high school. So, now we're, we are making our way back, and our next visit at some point, and I guess that's probably the fall, would be at the middle school for us to see some of the programs that are being offered there. Over the last two weeks, administrators have been working to finalize the standardized testing schedules at Polk, Judson, Swift, and Watertown High. Of course, these standardized tests include the Smart to Balance test in English Language Arts and Math, the Connecticut Mastery Test in Science. And we've also been scheduling the SAT, which I believe is April 3, the school-wide SAT Day at Watertown High School. And so, the majority of the testing, that testing that needs to take place for both state testing and also the SAT being required by the state now, but also a precursor for students who are applying to college, will take place throughout the month of April and the first half of May. There's a strategy we've employed, and we will continue to utilize this year, and that is to place the Smart to Balance mathematics testing as late in the schedule as possible so that students experience as much mathematics classroom instruction as they can before the test is administered, because as you know, those skills build upon each other from grade to grade in mathematics. So, that is the final piece of our testing. Likewise, we are required to do standardized testing for any students in the district who are labeled as English language learners by law. And currently, we have about 75 students in the district who are labeled as English language learners. The primary language of our English language learners being Albanian in Watertown, although we have students who speak other languages also, also Spanish, we have some Macedonian, we have some Italian, we have a number of languages that are the first language of some of our students, but the most prevalent at the time is Albanian. They take a, an exam called the Last Links, which is required in our state, as I already mentioned, and it's to determine which students might need additional services, or if the services could be reduced or discontinued based on how well they do on this exam. It's, the basis, like all other standardized testing, is that we are looking for students to be proficient in English, and that is shown by academic work, but also by speaking, writing, and listening as part of taking this exam. Again, thank you, Mr. Deacon, for mentioning the art show. That was very well done, as I called it, version 2.0. This is the second year that we did it at the scale that we did here. Thank you to the high school for hosting it, but thank you very much to the art teachers throughout the district who really worked hard with our students to showcase their talents. Just, again, as with the music students, so much, so much work, dedication, teaching, and the products of it, if you were here to see, were really amazing. Also, we had the Coffee House at John Trumbull Primary School last week, and that is a program that we have begun to showcase the musical program and the talents of our students. So, I wanted to thank all of our music instructors, again, for the work put into that event. We did it a little bit differently this year, as the way that it was set up, which I believe worked out well, and we had nearly 400 people, nearly 400 visitors, parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, community members that came to see that, which was fantastic. Likewise, I mentioned, I saw Julia Scolacci receiving an award somewhere else, because I was at the Rotary Club meeting last Wednesday, because our Students of the Month were recognized from the high school there. And after that, we had a visit at Judson, Judson twice within a week. And, that's a new one. We, we went to see the Chromebook donation, in effect, at the school. We had the Rotary Club donate a Chromebook cart last year, and then they followed up with the donation of a charging station for it, which has been a welcome addition because it's, it's mobile, and it helps us maintain the inventory safely. It locks, all of the Chromebooks go back in, they can be charged in any classroom that they're in, within the cart. So, we had a nice visit with several Rotary members. About eight, I think, came to Judson to see the students using the donation. Mr. Deacon, thank you very much. I think that you hit all of the rest of the points for me. As Mr. Deacon said, I, I was at one of the schools that you mentioned. In the past two weeks, I've been at all five schools for elongated periods of time, more than once in most cases, seen numerous classrooms. And as Mr. Deacon also mentioned, we've begun the vulnerability, what are called the vulnerability assessments, that I've spoken about before. This is part of school safety and security. And we do it every two years to go through a checklist, again, of where we are in terms of what the latest requirements are for school safety. So, to put this into perspective, the last time that this was done, it was done in preparation for when we were applying for the school security grant. And as a result of it, we put in the cameras, the key cards, and the panic systems, and a number of other changes to the facilities and also the policies and procedures. We continue to reevaluate our policies and procedures every year, and we do it with a large team that typically includes teachers, administrators, nurses in the buildings, firefighters, or Chief Black, police officers. But this is a specific committee that meets in each school, full of all of the same people that I mentioned. We also have the emergency management director, the retired Sergeant Bromley, at those meetings. So, some of those I am involved in, in the actual risk assessment when they're at the schools. For example, I was at John Trumbull's today. That really just depends, honestly, on scheduling, because we need to get them done, and there's a lot of people to put into the room. So, from my office, we review the plans in advance. They go, well, it's data, these meetings are really about data collection. Which pieces of this are in place, which do we need to think about putting in as we move forward and revise security plans every year, because they are living documents. And every, for example, every time a drill is run, there are almost always, as I've said before, some sorts of changes that we make in some piece of the plan, no matter how small, because we always debrief after incidents. So, we've done three out of the five schools.
Three out of five.
And the next two are scheduled over the next two weeks.
Thursday, Friday?
Yeah.
And then the Muntzen House.
And then, yes, that's where I'm getting the two weeks, because next week, we are, we are now doing Muntzen House. That had not been done in the past, but we are extending this vulnerability, risk assessment to Muntzen House as an extension of the district. We all decided to reevaluate the plans there the way that we have all of the schools. So, thank you to Mrs. Brown for heading those, along with, we have had Officer De Sina present, we have had Officer Rivera present, as I said, Sergeant Bromley, and also Chief Black. So, they take at least an hour, some have been more like two hours, so it's a considerable amount of work that goes into completing the checklist and collecting this data, and I'm appreciative of the time that everyone has given thus far. And as you know, we'll bring those plans back to the board again this year, so we'll be talking about it after that data is collected. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carnamora. Moving on to item H, discussion regarding non-renewal of non-tenured teachers. Dr. Carnamora?
Thank you. were recognized from the high school there. And after that, we had a visit at Judson, Judson twice within a week. And, that's a new one. We, we went to see the Chromebook donation, in effect, at the school. We had the Rotary Club donate a Chromebook cart last year. And then they followed up with the donation of a charging station for it, which has been a welcome addition because it's, it's mobile and it helps us maintain the inventory safely. It locks, all of the Chromebooks go back in. They can be charged in any classroom that they're in within the cart. So we had a nice visit with several Rotary members. About eight, I think, came to Judson to see the students using the donation. Mr. Deacon, thank you very much. I think that you hit all of the rest of the points for me. As Mr. Deacon said, I, I was at one of the schools that you mentioned. In the past two weeks, I've been at all five schools for elongated periods of time. More than once in most cases, seen numerous classrooms. And as Mr. Deacon also mentioned, we've begun the vulnerability, what are called the vulnerability assessments that I've spoken about before, as part of school safety and security. And we do it every two years to go through a checklist, again, of where we are in terms of what the latest requirements are for school safety. So to put this into perspective, the last time that this was done, it was done in preparation for when we were applying for the school security grant. And as a result of it, we put in the cameras, the key cards and the panic systems and a number of other changes to the facilities and also the policies and procedures. We continue to reevaluate our policies and procedures every year. And we do it with a large team that typically includes teachers, administrators, nurses in the buildings, firefighters, or Chief Black, police officers. But this is a specific committee that meets in each school, full of all of the same people that I mentioned. We also have the Emergency Management Director, the retired Sergeant Bromley, at those meetings. So some of those I am involved in, in the actual risk assessment when they're at the schools. For example, I was at John Trumbull's today. That really just depends, honestly, on scheduling because we need to get them done. And there's a lot of people to put into the room. So from my office, we review the plans in advance. They go, well, it's data, these meetings are really about data collection. Which pieces of this are in place? Which do we need to think about putting in as we move forward and revise security plans every year? Because they are living documents. And every, for example, every time a drill is run, there are almost always, as I've said before, some sorts of changes that we make in some piece of the plan, no matter how small, because we always debrief after incidents. So we've done three out of the five schools. And the next two are scheduled over the next two weeks.
Thursday, Friday?
Yeah. And then, yes, that's where I'm getting the two weeks. Because next week, we are, we are now doing Munson House. That had not been done in the past, but we are extending this vulnerability risk assessment to Munson House as an extension of the district. We all decided to reevaluate the plans there the way that we have all of the schools. So thank you to Mrs. Brown for heading those along with, we have had Officer De Sina present. We have had Officer Rivera present, as I said, Sergeant Bromley, and also Chief Black. So they take at least an hour, some have been more like two hours. So it's a considerable amount of work that goes into completing the checklist and collecting this data. And I'm appreciative of the time that everyone has given thus far. And as you know, we'll bring those plans back to the board again this year. So we'll be talking about it after that data is collected. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carnamora. Moving on to item H, discussion regarding non-renewal of non-tenured teachers. Dr. Carnamora?
Thank you. A lot of talking tonight, pardon me. So each year, by our procedures and to comply with state law, we notice all non-tenured teachers in the district. And a non-tenured teacher is typically someone with less than five years. So from day one through the end of year four, you are a non-tenured teacher by law. Unless, for example, you worked two years somewhere else as a teacher and then you came to Watertown. Then you don't have the full four years. You are, if you, here, you have two more years here. Or if you were already tenured in another district, you are what is called fast-tracked to tenure. Again, these are Connecticut State statute. So, but generally speaking, with a new teacher to Watertown and a new teacher to the field in Watertown, it is anyone with less than five years. So it's a difficult procedure, to be perfectly honest, because we are telling all of our non-tenured teachers that I will come here tonight and do what we're about to do and recommend to the board, that they are noticed with a non-renewal. We do that so that if we did have to have a reduction in force because of budgetary constraints, we would be within timeline established by statute. And they would have been noticed by May 1st. Because if you are going to non-renew a teacher for the upcoming school year, the statute requires you to do it by May 1st. So generally speaking, however, it's nearly an impossibility to have a reduction in force that, of any sort with teachers. Because as you know, if we were able to reduce any of the positions, we've done that as we have moved through and put this budget together for the past two years because we were trying to reduce the salary lines where we could. Because especially this year, we've had such an increase in health insurance. So to give you an idea of how many teachers had a non-renewal letter delivered in the entire district, it's 67. So the fact of the matter is, we couldn't run the school district if they actually were non-renewed. But to be safe, it has been the policy of the Board of Education in Watertown to notice everyone in advance of May 1st. So since I have been the superintendent, I have done it the same way, which is I go to each school. I bring the letters with me. I hand-deliver them in advance of this meeting. I give every one of these 67 teachers, I bring them together in a room with union representation and with an administrator. And I tell them the process and the reason that we are doing it as a fail-safe in the case of a reduction in force to be in compliance with the law. As you might imagine, I face a lot of questions about whether or not this means they should look for other jobs and how likely do I believe it to be that they will actually be non-renewed, particularly the ones who are the newer hires. And as I always explain to them, we have to do this. And I would hope not to reduce the teaching force at all, no matter what became of the budget. Because, again, as you know, we are very lean in the, in the teaching department, given the number of students we have, the number of students with needs we have and the overall class sizes. We are not on the, on the small class size. We are, in most classes, we are close to where we would like to be. We are a little higher than we would like to be, given some of the grade levels. And as I explained to all of these non-tenured teachers, we allow that to happen to some degree in some grade levels because we are trying to think ahead as we hire. So every year since I've been the superintendent, when we have looked at class sizes, we have projected for the next year. So we know we have this many in third grade, we are going to now have that many in fourth grade. And we, and we run the numbers about the average, given how many teachers there are and how many students there are. If we find that we just have one larger class coming through, for example, that's a little bit of an anomaly, and we do have that happen fairly often. Instead of adding in a position, what we have typically done is moved a teacher from another grade to that particular grade for a year, for example. So we've done that from school to school in the first year that I was the superintendent. As an example, you may remember that we moved a sixth grade teacher from Swift to teach fifth grade at Judson for one year. Because that was an exceptionally large class with very large class sizes. But we did not have the money in the budget to add in a teacher, one, two. Again, if you look forward enough, you knew we just needed it for that year. So, one, I'd rather not add the money into the budget. And two, I would rather not hire people that a year later, we turn around and non-renew until their services are no longer needed. So these are some of the examples that I give when I meet with the teachers so that they understand that we have been very purposeful and strategic anytime a position has been added versus reallocating a current position. Which, again, mind you, is contingent upon them having the appropriate certification. I can't just move any teacher within the district. If I have a place where I need another teacher, I have to have someone I can move that has the appropriate certification. But we have done that in previous years. We will be doing that again in the fall. It's how we were able to meet some of the demands of the incoming grade levels without hiring any more teachers. So I don't have any additional teachers in the 2018, 2019 budget, but we will have to make moves between grade levels and possibly between schools. We will see how all of that shakes out as we move forward. That said, I delivered the letters. I have these conversations, I delivered the letters that said I would come here tonight and I would recommend that. I do that in advance because, heaven forbid, they happen to be watching on live stream and this is how they find out that I'm going to come and recommend that you non-renew all of them. So I give them advance notice, we will do that tonight. And I have these conversations, nearly one-on-one, but in a small group. After we carry forward the motion tonight, assuming that we do, a second letter goes out. And as I tell all of them, this is the scarier letter. Because the second letter after the board acts tonight will tell them that they are non-renewed in advance of May 1st. And then what happens is, we wait for the referendum. And we, if the referendum passes for the school budget, then we leave everything as is in the teaching force. I come back to the board, I recommend that you rescind their letters of non-renewal. And they get another letter that tells them it's been rescinded and they are employed in the fall. If not, and there were significant cuts made to the, to the Board of Education budget, then we would have to have a discussion about whether or not, you know, for example, we were going to allow certain class sizes to be in, in some places, in excess of 30 in the grades of K to 5, if we were to reduce an individual teacher in any one of those. Or if we were going to discontinue offering some of the courses that are currently in the program of studies at the high school, for example. We would have to make those sorts of strategic decisions and then decide if any of those non-renewals would remain and not be rescinded. So that is the process that we have carried out. That is the process that I have explained to the administrators and all of the teachers. If you have any questions for me about that or how it's carried out, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Dr. Carnamora. Moving on to item I, discussion regarding the 2016, 2017 school year calendar revision and graduation dates. Dr. Bromley?
Thank you. So we had a total of seven days when the schools were closed due to, in a couple of cases, predicted weather and, in the majority of cases, actual weather or the leftover effects of it, for example, the last storm. So that means we have to make up seven days at the end of June. So that would bring our new last day of school to June 21st, 2017. For the record, because I've been asked by some parents via email and calls, the April vacation is remaining as it is. None of those days have been removed. We did not have enough snow days to have to do that. So our April vacation is in effect, it is intact. It will start Monday, April 10th, through the 13th is officially April vacation. And the 14th is considered a holiday, it is the Good Friday holiday. That will remain intact, and we are just adding the seven days on to the end of June.
Thank you, Dr. Carnamora. We're moving on to item J, discussion regarding the proposed design and installation of a press box at Watertown High School. At 6:30 tonight, the Facility Subcommittee met and discussed this item. Some of the discussion topics were safety glass on the garage door, viewing, opening area, a small platform for each exit door upon exiting, hand railing on each, at least one side of that platform. We discussed things as rubber membrane roof, joy sizes and school colors. We're going to be painting this with our school colors, same as at concession stand. We would like to thank the Water Oak Circle of Sports for donating this building and some of the other things that may come about, such as some electrical installations for lighting and occupancy permit for maximum number of occupants in the building. Some very good suggestions by the Subcommittee. And after much discussion, we approved the design and installation by consensus and will move this item for discussion, possible approval by the board tonight. Moving on to, any, any questions by the board? I think we've answered most of our questions that we had in the Subcommittee. We'll move on to item K, public participation. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to item L, report from the board chair. In the absence of Mrs. Crati, there will be no report. We'll be on to item M, committee reports. Curriculum Instruction Committee, Kathy Rinaldi, she's not here, so there won't, will not be a report. Policy and Labor Committee, Mr. Vincenzi?
No, no report.
Budget and Finance Committee, that's Mr. Lambert. Dr. Carnamora presented the budget to the Town Council Finance Subcommittee last week. The Town Council will meet Tuesday, March 28th at 7:30 to discuss all budgets with input, input from the Finance Subcommittee. Facilities PBC Operations Committee, again, Mr. Lambert. Tonight, we had, at our Facility Subcommittee meeting, we discussed the design and the installation of a press box at Watertown High School. There was much discussion regarding interpretations of ASB drawings and engineering specifications. There was a consensus to move this item for possible approval under action item O-4. Governance and Community Engagement, Mr. Mikowski, any report?
No report at this time.
Thank you. Move on to item N, communication. Mrs. Wilk, are there any communications to report?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. We'll move on to item O, action items. Action item number one, consideration to approve the non-renewal of non-tenured teachers. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve of the non-renewal of non-tenured teachers based upon the possible need for a reduction in the workforce and that the employees affected be notified in writing prior to May 1st, 2017 in accordance with Connecticut State law.
Thank you, Mr. Vincenzi. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? No abstentions, motion passes. Number two, action item number two, consideration of the approval to revise the 2016, 2017 school year calendar. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve of the revised 2016, 2017 school year calendar for the Watertown Public Schools and that the last day of school be Wednesday, June 21st, 2017.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yes, I second it.
Thank you. Discussion? No discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? No abstentions, motion passes. Number three, action item number three, consideration of the approval of high school and middle school graduation dates. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve of Tuesday, June 20th, 2017 as a date for graduation exercises for Watertown High School, class of 2017, and Wednesday, June 21st, 2017, as a date for graduation exercises for Swift Middle School.
Thank you. Do I have a mo, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? No abstentions, motion passes. Number four, action item number four, consideration of the approval of the proposed design and installation of a press box at Watertown High School. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve of the design and installation of a press box at Watertown High School donated by the Water Oak Circle of Sports.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? No abstentions, motion passes. Moving on to item P, future agenda items or board members' comments. Do any board members have any agenda items or board member comments? Hearing none. We'll move on to item.
I'm hiding over here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I just wanted to second Dr. Carnamora's comments earlier about all of the culture that we've seen throughout the district in the last week or two. I had the pleasure of going to the Coffee House. I had the pleasure of going to the art show at the high school. And I wish more parents could come and see this because, one, it, it's invigorating to see what our children are doing. Number two, it's invigorating to see what your, their children will be doing and the opportunities that they have. And all of that is surrounded but what, by what our teachers and administrators are doing. And it, sometimes it's hard to, to make it tangible on what our children are actually doing and learning. And so I wanted to thank everybody in the district that had input on that. The singing was amazing. The instrument playing was amazing. The artwork was amazing. And so it, I just wanted to share that because it's, it's really special to see those things. And hopefully, more, more community members and parents will get out and, and get to enjoy those things. So thank you. Oh, sorry, one other thing. Fundraiser idea, we know that there's PowerPoint for dummies. I, I think we should do PowerPoint by fourth graders. Because what I see, what my son does in fourth grade and what my daughter does in seventh grade is light years ahead of people in the business world. Light years. So kudos to everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski. I went home and did that penny problem after that walk through at Judson. I'm not done with it yet. Any more comments?
New standards.
Thank you. Moving on to item Q, public participation. Are there any members of the public who wishes to speak? Are there any members of the public who wishes to speak? Hearing none. We'll move on to item R, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board adjourn.
Second?
I second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we are adjourned, aye.